Good evening. Good evening, we'll call the meeting order. Welcome to tonight's school bar meeting, Monday, October 23rd, 2017. Sorry, we're a little bit late. We did have a meeting just prior to this. So, the first thing we'd like to start out with is a spotlight on school supply donations. We have three organizations that were very helpful and instrumental in getting our students off to a good start. And I'll turn it over to Superintendent Osai to kind of introduce our companies that assisted. Thank you.
All right. Good evening Chair Yarosh and members of the board. I am honored this evening to share information about three different organizations that were generous in providing school supplies to the St. Louis Park Public School District this fall. So at this time, I would like to invite the two individuals that are here this evening to the podium to recognize them with a certificate of appreciation and then give them an opportunity just to say a few words about themselves and their organization. And then I will also acknowledge Lori Hoffman, who's the manager of Behavior Health from Park Nicollet Clinic, who cannot be with us this evening. So at this time, I would like to invite to the podium Amanda Munoz, who's a St. Louis Park parent and on behalf of Cargill's Women in Technology donated school supplies this fall. So if you could join me in welcoming Amanda. So the certificate just reads "The Board of Education of St. Louis Park Schools wishes to recognize and thank Cargill Women in Technology." And we just really appreciate your generosity. And if you would like to say a few things, you certainly can.
Thank you so much and thank you for including us tonight. You know, we have our offices down on Excelsior and 169, so it's natural to look to our east, look to our west, and so we were able to donate to both Hopkins and St. Louis Park schools this fall. And as a parent, I'm an Aquila kindergartner and fourth grader, I was especially tickled to be able to bring my son over and donate a trunkload of supplies, knowing how much it means to him and his classmates to have the tools that they need to learn well. Because we certainly have great staff and teachers here in the district, so to get the right tools in our students' hands is really important and glad that we can be involved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would also like to, this evening, invite to the podium Sari Liederman from Homeowners Financial Group USA, the Midwest Region Culture Committee member. So if you would please join me in welcoming Sari, please. And her certificate reads, you know, "The Board of Education of St. Louis Park Schools wishes to recognize and thank Homeowners Financial Group USA." And again, thank you for your commitment and dedication to the St. Louis Park Public School District.
My pleasure. Thank you. Homeowners Financial Group is a mortgage company and we're located over in the West End, over in, by the Park Place Building. The reason we picked St. Louis Park is our Midwest office is here in St. Louis Park. And as a graduate of St. Louis Park High School and a former person at Aquila and the old Park Knoll, it was nice to be able to donate back to the school that I grew up in. So it was a pleasure and we were able to fill about 34 complete backpacks with the school supplies needed for K through 5th grade.
Thank you. Were you gonna take a picture? Okay. And that concludes our spotlight.
Do you want to recognize the third?
Oh, yeah, thank you. Thank you Chair Yarosh. The third group that donated just generously this fall was Park Nicollet Clinic of St. Louis Park, the behavioral health staff there. At Park Nicollet was very kind and donated school supplies this fall. And Lori Hoffman, the manager of the Behavior Health Group, was kind enough and come over and to deliver the supplies for us. So we thank them as well and would like to appreciate her in our absence.
Jim, while you're having your picture taken, I'd just like to say that this is the kind of community support that makes St. Louis Park such a great place to be. Thank you all.
Well, thanks to those companies and organizations, we appreciate that. Our agenda this evening, we have the approval of the agenda, open forum, superintendent's report. The discussion items are the 2017 Kids Voting Presentation. And then the next item will be the Summer School Programs Recap. Then we'll have a WeMap update. We'll have a referendum update. Next item will be Policy Development First Reading for 514, Policy 514 Bullying Prohibition, Policy 515 Protection and Privacy of Pupil Records, and 521, Policy 521 Student Disability Non-Discrimination. We will have a second reading then, Policy Development for Policy 102, Equal Educational Opportunity. Our Consent Agenda, then we'll have our Action Agenda, which has the approval of the second reading of Policy 102, Equal Education Opportunity. Communications and Transmittals, followed by Adjournment. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
No move.
Moved by Jim.
Seconded.
Seconded by Karen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 6-0. Okay. The next item is on our agenda is the open forum. And we do have three individuals wishing to speak. And the first... If you'd state your name, your grade, your address, all that preliminary stuff would be great. And then you have three minutes. I don't know if you saw the rules. We have a list of rules, so we'll give each of you three minutes to speak.
You like my address too? Like for the...
If.
Or were you joking?
You want?
(Laughter).
Yeah. Okay, that's fine. You don't have to.
Oh, sorry.
You got it.
Okay. Well, my name is Katie Hardy and I'm a junior here at the high school. What I really like about this high school is its diversity, probably above all else. Just I really like the mix of all the cultures and religions and beliefs that come into this community. I think the biggest thing that I support with this new referendum has to be the new central kitchen. As someone who has home lunch, I like, I do wish that I could have a nice school lunch and I think a lot of other people do too, just because nutrition and a good full stomach for the day is so important for education. And I think that if we had this big central kitchen that would feed the whole district, I think that's really important for kids' work ethic and just energy throughout the day. And I think the second one that I really support is the construction of a better... now I'm blanking on the word, like assembly auditorium for the middle school. It's, right now, it's just, it's a gym and it really doesn't provide the right environment for a show, a show that, you know, middle schoolers, like we know that can provide, like, I mean, to perform. And right now, everyone shares the auditorium at the high school and logistically, it's hard and like around scheduling, it's hard. And it's just not really a good situation right now. So I think if we had a second auditorium for the middle schoolers for their performing arts and for their, okay, just like their things in general, it'd be, it'd be really nice for them to have it. Also for communities around the middle school too, they could have an open area to carry on their business. That'd be really helpful, so. Yep.
All right, thanks so much. Appreciate it. Next speaker is Anna Jensen.
Hi, my name's Anna Jensen. I'm a junior here at the high school. One thing that I love about SLP is just the community that we live in and how tight it is. I honestly, whether I'm in the classroom or on the soccer field or wherever I am, I feel so supported by teachers and students and it's just a great environment to be in and just be a part of this community. One thing that really excites me about the referendum is the fact that the media center would be, like, would expand. And you have no idea how many times in classrooms, we do so much, like group work and just like group presentations in the class and outside of the class. We, like, when we're trying to prepare for that, we get stuck in the halls. And, you know, that's fine, but I mean, you have people passing by and it's just really hard to focus in that kind of environment. So it'd be really nice if we had an area where we could just fully focus, feel comfortable, and not always having to like move and try to find a space to work. Because even after school, there's so many students who are waiting, they can't take the bus home because they have sports after school. So where do they go? They sit in the halls. So that would just be nice to have an open space. It'd just be nice to have a neutral space for all students. Also, I'm really excited about just a more flexible environment in classrooms. Because as we all know, students learn differently because we're all individuals, so we're gonna learn differently. So, and as things, like, as our learning becomes more like collaborative in groups and all that, it would just be nice if, like, the space would provide that and kind of reflect how we really learn. So, yes, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Our last speaker is Jack Ostrowski.
Hi, I'm Jack Ostrowski. I'm a junior at SLP High School. So one thing I love about this school is the, like, range of options for choosing a class, like, depending on how much you want to be challenged and the workload you want. There's just a wide variety that you can choose from. So one thing I really support for this referendum is the improvement to our weight room. So in the, every day in the summer and then Monday through Thursday in the school year, I go to Strength and Conditioning after school from 3:30 to 5:00. And what I find is there's very limited equipment and space. So most of the time, it's really crowded and then you kind of run out of equipment to use and then you get behind schedule. And I think this really discourages most people from going. So if we improved our weight room, opened up like the facility more, I think more people would go and then that would translate to more benefit for the athletics. And then another area I support for improvement is the air and heating system. So, like, many students, including me, are really sensitive to heat and cold. You know, I get like a headache or, and low energy if it's really hot. And our school right now, on any given day, you know, there's, like, one classroom could be freezing, another class could be really hot. So I think that really distracts us from learning and then you kind of just have to worry, like, oh, should I wear a sweatshirt for this class? How am I gonna dress? So if we improved and just kind of got like a uniform air system, I think students will be able to focus and have a better environment to learn in. So, yeah.
Thank you. So I really, the board and the community, I hope, really appreciates the three of you showing up and speaking on behalf of the referendum, as the students will be the ones most directly affected, so appreciate it. Thanks for taking the time and coming. Anyone else? Those are the only three. Anyone else care to speak in open forum today? Okay. Before I turn it over to the superintendent's report, I just want to acknowledge we have two former board members in the audience, Betty Shaw and Julie Schweitzer, so thank you. And Superintendent Osai, the superintendent's reporter.
All right. Chair Yarosh, members of the board. Prior to going into the report that I plan, I want to first just thank Katie, Anna, and Jack for your, your public comment. You know, as I, as I think about our mission and as I think about our mission outcomes, your, the courageous leadership that you demonstrated this evening to come up and to share your beliefs about the impact of the referendum really speaks to one of our mission outcomes, and that is that all of our students will voluntarily and continually contribute to society. And I viewed what you did this evening as contribution to our school community. So thank you very much for being here this evening. As, as part of my report this evening, I would first like to just start off by sharing some information about SLP Reads. As you, as you know, October is SLP Reads Month in St. Louis Park Public Schools. And as a part of SLP Reads, each of our four elementary schools hosts the Author Night in conjunction with our annual Read-a-Thon. And all students who attend the SLP Reads evening receive a free book. And I'll back up for just one second, so that you'll notice there, this week, we have three of our schools who will have their SLP Reads night. PSI will be tomorrow night, Peter Hobart will be Wednesday night, and Susan Lindgren will be Thursday. Aquila had their Author Night last week, Tuesday, October 17th, and they featured author Chris Monroe. And for more information about SLP Reads, please visit the district website. Another announcement that I would like to make, in this kind of change, there was some, so Penny DePree, who's currently our interim assistant principal at the high school, was appointed by Governor Dayton to the Professional Educator Licensing and Standards Board. Throughout the, you know, as part of the process, because she's in an interim position, she was told that she would not be able to participate on the board. And then just recently, last week, she was called and they requested that she participate. So she'll begin her three-year term January 1st, 2018. She'll be serving on an 11-member board that will oversee teacher licensing, teacher preparation, and teacher ethics in Minnesota. So when you see Penny, please congratulate her on that honor. And I would also like to just provide a brief fall athletics update. The football team went 5-3 during the regular season. I had a chance to talk to Rob this morning and he said that this was the first time in, in recent memory that they had a winning season. And I just said that he set the groundwork for the creating that winning season, right? But they, they're the number two seed in the section tournament and they'll, they'll play their next game this Saturday at 1:00 PM. Boys soccer won the West, the Metro West Conference title, advanced to the section championship, so they had a phenomenal season at 12-5 and 1. Girls soccer team had an outstanding season as well, finishing 10-5 and 1, and they advanced to the section semifinals. Girls volleyball finished the regular season with a 14-12 record and they'll begin section tournament play tomorrow. Girls cross country placed third in the Metro West Conference. And 8th grader Josephine Mosby placed 4th grade and sophomore Kaia Myers placed, placed 9th. The boys cross-country team placed 5th in the conference. And sophomore Niobayu Beckley placed 8th and freshman Rodanlov Zaitre, and I may, I'm pronouncing his last name incorrectly, I practiced it several times, but I believe it's Zaitre, placed 13th. And section boys meet for boys and girls will be this Wednesday. And girls swimming and diving team placed 4th at the section true team on October 14th and they're preparing for their upcoming section meet, which will occur between the 9th and 11th of November. And lastly, our girls tennis recently concluded a successful season as they played, they went 6-1 in the Metro West Conference play. So overall, all of the fall sports had a tremendous seasons. Students, you know, there was great participation and students really represented our school and our community well. And that concludes my report for this evening.
All right. Thank you Superintendent Osai. We move on to the discussion items, and the first is the 2017 Kids Voting Presentation. And Julie Schweitzer, I think, will be presenting on this.
All right. Carrie. Oh, okay. They are organized. We should expect no less. Perfect. Wonderful. Thank you Lisa. Thank you Chair Yarosh and members of the board. My name is Julie Schweitzer, but I'm here tonight on behalf of the League of Women Voters. And we're here to talk about kids voting, which has been a three-year partnership between the league and the school district. We partner with St. Louis Park Middle and Elementary Schools to provide a realistic voting opportunity for our youth. On the regular November voting day, which this year's November 7th, just in case anybody in this room has forgotten or anybody listening, students in grades 2 through 8 will go usually by class down to their gym or media center to a central place in the school. And they will sign in on the voter registration log. They will receive a ballot, they'll fill it out in voting booths using privacy shields, and then turn it into the ballot box, pretty much like the adults do. The ballots are for the same offices and the same referendum questions as are on the regular ballots. And so of course, this year, that's the city council, school board offices, and the referendum questions. The votes are tallied and shared back with the schools and they'll be posted, we think, that evening after the polls close and then can be discussed with the students the next day. In preparation, teachers in the schools have been given books about the democracy and the civic process and voting. There are videos, the city has collaborated with the videos from the school board and city council candidate forums, and the opening statements are being put together in one, that segment of the video. So teachers have access to that to show to their staff. Betty Shaw is here because her Girl Scout troop, number 13193, has made signs once again to promote voting and those will go up into the schools to, to build a little excitement among the youth. We've met several times with Carrie Ross and Sarah Thompson, have been great assets along with the principals from all of those schools. And several of them have a lead teacher who's been helping with the process and planning as well. League members, parents, and other community members volunteer at the schools and serve in the traditional election judge roles that, that you experience when you go to vote. We're encouraging anybody who wants to help to go sign up. And on the screen is the information. That'll be going home in elementary schools in the kids' backpack flyers. It'll, we're trying to share it through PTOs, through any school communication tool there is. So we encourage anybody who's interested. It's really a fun experience. The kids are knowledgeable, they generally know what they're doing, they, they're really excited to be treated like adults. And so if you want to have a two or three-hour volunteer segment on November 7th, still plenty of time for you to go vote. Watch for that information coming out in the flyers and other communications and please go to the Sign Up Genius link and sign up at the building of your choice for the two-hour, three-hour segment of your choice. As I said, the students get really excited about this, so it's a good opportunity for family discussions. It takes the tradition, at least in my family, I generally try to take my daughters along to vote, but this really takes it a giant step further. Also, we think St. Louis Park is unique this year, to our knowledge, and Deb Brinkman, our president, is here. We're the only district that is actually doing kids voting this year. Last year, with the state elections, there were many districts who were participating. We think we may be the only one this year, and I think that's very fitting for St. Louis Park. It shows that we take our local offices and our local elections seriously and we want to show our youth that this is important and serious. So we look forward to kids voting on November 7th and I'd be happy to try and answer any questions you might have.
All right. Julie, thank you so much and the League of Women Voters. I mean, we, any extra help the schools can get in, in teaching our populace and our kids about civics and voting and it's, is well, well-received. I just read something, I think 75% of US citizens don't know the three branches of government. And so we need a little more involvement in our democracy, I think. So we really thank you and the League of Women Voters, because if you start voting as a kid, we hope these habits continue. And so this is a great thing.
Legislative, judicial, and executive.
(Laughter). I was not challenging you. I knew better than that, so. But thank you. All right. Our next item on the agenda is Summer School Programs Recap, and our Director of Community Education, Lisa Green, will present a Summer School Recap.
Thank you Chair Yarosh, Superintendent Osai, and members of the board. I'm here for the Summer Programs Recap, and I just want to point out that, you know that I don't run all the programs. I actually just collect the information. I sort of, you know, make it possible and, you know, get people together to do this and then I collect the information at the end of the summer. So what I did this year is I asked the various program coordinators to send back information. And they did, and some sent a lot and some sent a little, so I compiled it all in this packet for you that you got in your packet. And as I go through the presentation, I'll just read selected excerpts from the packet. I don't have time to read the entire packet, but I just want you to get a flavor for some of the great things that happened this summer. So first of all, this summer was the first summer we had a summer lunch program. And that was a really big deal for us. And so here we have the daily averages for breakfast and then lunch. And Aquila and the middle school were three-week programs, pretty much a dedicated group of students that were there, that were bussed in and that had transportation there and transportation back. And you can see how many students there took advantage of the breakfast and lunch. Of course, less take advantage of breakfast because they just might not be there during breakfast time. And then Central was the long program that went all summer long. And that had, we were hoping that it would do better, but we're just gonna keep building. We're, we were really working at, but I did want to read a couple of excerpts from the, from the notes here, from our school nutrition staff, because I just think it's really important what they had to say. So the lead staff person said, "I thought it went well. There were a few families that came in almost every day that were very grateful. The kids at 8 liked it and parents and staff thought it was great." Now remember, kids could come in and their families, kids 18 and under eat free, and they could come in from the street. They didn't have to be participating in a program. Another staff member said, "Many times we had parents come in and thank us for our hard work and to take the time to provide free meals to their child who otherwise struggled to get full meals in during the week. We were also told that we are one of the longest-running summer food programs in the surrounding area. I know that with continuing hard work and dedication, we can make a great summer food program for our students that both they and us can be extremely proud of. For the first year for running this program, I say we did an excellent job. Although the daily numbers were not as high as we were hoping, we still made a difference every day for our students and that's all we can hope to do." And one other staff person said, "I had the best experience with summer feeding through St. Louis Park School District. One of the more gratifying moments I had was when a group of young students came for lunch. I was helping the children choose fruits and vegetables. One boy came up to me and said, 'I brought my lunch,' and he was holding up a bag of Doritos. I explained to him that he can have so much more, a sandwich, fresh fruit, vegetables, and milk. He ran to the line, filled up his plate, and immediately began digging into his meal. At that moment, I knew in my heart that this was the perfect program for St. Louis Park." So even though the numbers might not have been exactly where we wanted them to be, you can see by the stories, this was a very welcome and needed program in St. Louis Park and we will continue with it. Now, Summer Learning Academy, that is our academic summer school program at Aquila. And that was only a three-week program this summer because of various building projects and things like that. So it was the three weeks before the 4th of July. And you can see by the average daily attendance, if you look, and last summer was 250, the year before, 2016, which was actually a full program, was 260, and the year before, that was 309. The numbers of that program have actually been going down. And we're not really sure why, but the coordinator is actually just getting less referrals. And that could be because, they, they do have to qualify graduate for graduation incentive codes, and it could be because we just have less students that need it. And if that's the case, then that is really great.
Is there a way to, is there a way to find that out or how do we know? Can we?
You know, that's, I could ask Mike Nordin what he thinks. That's just what he's told me. I don't think he really understands why either. We could maybe ask the principals and just find out if that, is feeling, we could talk to Prachi to see if actually if test scores are going up. I just, I don't know why there's less referrals than there have been in the past. And then of course, we had our preschool program there, like we have for the past several years, and the average daily attendance there was 18. That is for students that are summer before kindergarten, so that have had little or no preschool experience. And my personal observations of that program for the last several years have been that students show up on the first day scared and timid and by the, by the last day, they are gregarious and just loving the program and, and prepared for that elementary school environment because they are with children. environment because they are with children who are older than them and will be the ages of children when they start kindergarten. Plus, many of them take the bus, and they go through the lunch line, so, they're getting a lot of those kinds of practical experiences as well as the academic experiences.
Lisa?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Could you just go back one slide, please? You kept saying you were disappointed in the numbers on the breakfast and lunch, and I guess I'm a little surprised at that. I mean, we're feeding over 300 kids for breakfast and feeding over 450 for lunch. That's a good chunk of kids who wouldn't be eating.
You're right. It is, I agree, that that is good, and that's, that's great, but if, when we get to the Kids Place slide, we had 500 students at Kids Place, and so, it's like, we're, the wondering is, why weren't more of them taking advantage of the free lunch program? So, it's not, it's a great, like, number just in and of itself, but in context of how many students and participants were there, it's not as high as I know our school nutrition department would have liked to have seen.
Just another data point that might be helpful on the preschool program. Might be interesting to follow, see how those kids do, how we can, you know, bring those kids up to speed just in time for kindergarten and see how they do over the next couple of years, and, and if those are, you know, positive numbers, or data that we get back, you know, how can we work on trying to expand that?
Okay, I will, thank you. Now, we're going into our St. Louis Park Middle School Program, and that is also a three-week program. They run the same length of time as the elementary academic program because they share transportation. Now, the average daily attendance there was 157, which is almost double what it has been since I've started working here seven years ago. So, that program is building, and I think, I don't know exactly why, but I know that Gina Magnusson, who is the coordinator for that program, has really been working hard over the last number of years to build that program and build it into something that students want to do. Recruiting for middle-school-age students is a very different process than recruiting for elementary. And so, I think what's happening is she's creating a program there that students want to go to. They still have to qualify under graduation incentive codes, but more of those students who qualify are wanting to go. So, I think that's, that's great. Also, this year, there was an extended program for students of color, and about 50 or so participated in that, and it was, they, they talked about college pathways and entrepreneurship and community activism, and it was a collaboration with the St. Louis Park Police Department, where they did teen talks about safety and things like that. I want to read one excerpt from the notes from Gina. "Teachers reported that summer school allows teachers to repair broken relationships. Spending more time with students, especially at breakfast and lunch, allowed them the opportunity to see the students more as people than just students in the classroom. Teachers also reported that students engage more in the collaboration of the learning, writing responses on chart paper for the whole class, handing out or collecting materials or lending a quick team, community, or leading a quick team or community-building game." And I just want to point out that all the research shows that really, one of, aside from academics, a huge benefit for what we call out-of-school-time programs is student engagement. And right there, that says right there, that is student engagement. That is teachers engaging with students, and even though it was only a three-week program, hopefully, for those students, when they come back to school this fall, they will be more engaged because they had that experience with their teachers. Now, high school, this is for credit, so, the students who participate in the high school program need the credit for graduation. So, this year, we had 59 seat-based students, and that's where they come in and sit in a class and learn a specific subject, and we had 107 independent study students, and they can actually study anywhere on the computer, and, but they also have the opportunity to come in and talk to a teacher and have a teacher help them. And out of that, we had 134 credits earned, and, but the students still have time. The independent study students have all school year to complete their, their credits, so we may end up with more than 134 credits earned through that program. PSI had their open library and computer lab again, and this year, they did a treasure hunt, and so, just for fun, I included the treasure hunt in your package, so you could see what the families and students did this summer who participated in that. Now, Peter Hobart participated in several programs this summer. Now, this first one is Basketball in the Park, and this is a program that has been going on for a number of years over at Ainsworth Park, and it was started by the St. Louis Park Police Department, and now it's a collaboration with Perspectives, Peter Hobart, and the Meadowbrook Collaborative. And they play games, and they have a meal served every Thursday night during the summer. And so, Peter Hobart teachers go there and participate with the families, and so, I've got a great story from that. "There was a student who came to play math games every single week and take them home. We always send the math games home in hopes that they play them with their families. It was reassured to me that this was happening when the mother of this student stopped by the blanket and sat down. She said, 'Could you help me understand how to play this game because we were playing at home and got stuck on one step?' And I said, 'Yes, of course.' The mother, student, and I proceeded to play the game. Then they went home again to continue growing the students' math knowledge while playing the game as a family." So, that's showing that, that they're achieving their goals by having students take these games home with them, and the parents come down and talk to the teachers, so that was really working out there. And then, one other story is, this is something new this summer. School-age kids living at Meadowbrook, or what is now Era on Excelsior, benefited from a collaboration between Perspectives and Meadowbrook to transport kids and parents to Ainsworth Park on Thursday night. The Perspectives van picked up anywhere from seven to 10 kids and one or two parents every Thursday from June 8th through August 10th, a total of nine Thursdays. And the kids played lacrosse and basketball, and they had a meal, and so, this was the first summer that Meadowbrook kids were provided with the free transportation. And so, again, thanks to Perspectives and that partnership that, that we have with them, Meadowbrook kids were able to participate in the fun. They also, Peter Hobart teachers went over and did tutoring over at Perspectives. Three teachers tutored 17 students, and a story from that is, "One highlight, as the reading clubs, the older students formed. With help from the fifth, the second-grade instructional coach, we were able to get high-quality literature for these groups. These books acted as either a mirror for students to see themselves or a window to see another person's perspective. I will never forget reading Crossover and hearing the two boys in my group, now fifth and sixth grade, laugh gleefully at what was happening to the character. Reading was brought to life for them this summer." And then, Peter Hobart also had a science lab at Peter Hobart, and 25 to 30 students participated in each session, and they brought in different guests throughout the summer. And so, one highlight from this was, was a highlight, one highlight was that all the guests that, they were able to bring in with allotted funding. The guests came from Westwood Nature Center, the Baccan Museum, and the Work Science Programming. They were all amazing and provided wonderful, hands-on science opportunities for our students. One especially amazing event was when each child made a kaleidoscope with the works leader. They all brought them home and just loved the science behind them. Susan Lindgren had a, decided to run a targeted services program for the five weeks after the Fourth of July, so this was after the academic summer school program, so, some of the students who were in both, were able to participate in both programs, and these were students from Meadowbrook, Courtyard, Park Glen, and the Brittany Apartments. And there was about 40 students, and they were, were able to provide transportation through a grant that they received. And then, what they did was, so the students could participate in the lunch program because there, there wasn't enough students at Susan Lindgren to viably provide a lunch program there. They took the students over to Central, and then the students had lunch there, and then the bus brought them home after that. And they participated in STEM programming, and that where they learned critical thinking skills and reading skills and to work collaboratively. And they had an egg walk challenge, and one little boy named Ray knew that if he walked across cartons of eggs distributing his weight, he would not crack any eggs. And another day was spent doing four challenges with cups, sticks, and cubes. Multi-age groups worked together or individually to meet their challenges." Now, we're going to community education programming. Our summer learning and play programming is, was all held after the Fourth of July, and this is our week-long camp programs, either in the morning or the afternoon. And we offered, as we have done for many years, is we offer the classes for free to any students who are in the Summer Learning Academy program. And this year, because all of our classes were after the academic summer school program, we had about 50 to 60 students who were able to participate almost for the whole five weeks. And because of that, we, that filled up our classes, so we didn't have to cancel anywhere near as many classes as we've had in the past. So, that was a win-win for everybody, including our paying families who their classes weren't canceled. A couple of things that happened there. One of the things that, that our staff, that we're really trying to do is build relationships with the families as they were coming in, and, and actually, those relationships are continuing on into the school year too, as the families call, want to sign up for classes and talk to the staff. And they also hired three high school students to assist with daily activities. Two were Spanish speakers, and this was the first job for two of them. And then, one of the students got the opportunity to pursue an educational intern experience. All the students learned job skills of customer service, planning schedules, assisting with classes, and working with children. One of the students went on to work as a nanny for one of the participant families. So, part of what we do too in community education is youth development, and that's an example of some of the youth development that we were doing. And last but not least, Kids Place Childcare. And this is the one program that the students that participate in this have the most exposure to the school district throughout the summer. They're, last summer, I, it was a long summer last summer, so they were there for, I think, 11 weeks, and it is, the students are averaged there about eight to nine hours a day, and we provide lots of activities for students. This year, we had 143 preschool and 376 school-age kids for a total of 519 children, so that is the size of an elementary school. In your packet, there's lots of information about Kids Place, and you can see all the different activities they do. Like we say, we like to provide the fun and we sneak in the learning. A couple of good stories is, "The Kids Place Program Manager received two unsolicited phone calls from field trip venues during the summer regarding St. Louis Park visits, Como Town and Grand Slam. Both managers of these sites took the time to call and provide positive feedback about the group's visit. They shared that our children are well-behaved and pleasant, everyone cleans up after themselves, and the staff are attentive and are seen participating with the children, and they were very impressed by St. Louis Park. And the kids love us. We love hearing from parents how excited children are to come to Kids Place in the morning because of something fun that was planned for that day, and there's something fun planned for almost every single day. Or that children, upon waking up on Saturday, are disappointed because there is no Kids Place. We see children each day at the end of the day who don't want to leave. This is a good indicator that we are doing something right." Are there any questions?
I always took that as I was doing something wrong as a parent.
I know, I used to think that too.
My kids tell me to leave at the end of the day at Kids Place. My kids do love the summer Kids Place, and the school year Kids Place.
Excellent.
Great environment, and I'm just incredibly impressed by the staff, that they can, day after day, take these kids on a field trip and be organized about it, and the kids have fun, and it's safe. I'm just, again, I'm just totally amazed, so, thanks for everything that they're doing.
Thank you for that feedback.
What else? All right, thank you very much for the thorough presentation. Appreciate you, Lisa.
Thank you.
All right, our next item on the agenda is a WMEP West Metro Education Program update, and Superintendent Osai will help lead that discussion.
Good evening, Chair Yarosh and members of the board. This evening, I would just like to provide a brief update on the West Metro Education Program. I believe it was maybe two years ago where Superintendent Metz got a chance to get up and provide an update on WMEP, and at that time, WMEP was going through some, some transition. If you recall, they used to operate two schools, the fair schools, and at that time, they were letting those schools go to Minneapolis and Robbinsdale-area schools, and they were going to really focus on their professional development programming and their student programming. And over the last two years, WMEP has really worked to try to define who they want to be and the type of programming that they want to offer. As part of the, the board book, I provided the Joint Powers Agreement from WMEP, and what you'll notice is there, I think the date on the fourth engrossment of that Joint Powers Agreement is December 12, 2012, and at that time, WMEP was an 11-member district. And over the last several years, member districts have, for one reason or another, decided to no longer be a part of the West Metro Education Program. The other day, I had an opportunity to have a conversation with Dr. Ann Parks at the Minnesota Department of Education, and she's really responsible for all achievement and integration programming. As you know, any school district that participates in achievement and integration, so receives achievement and integration revenue, must either participate in some sort of consortium or partner with adjoining school districts. So, for example, St. Louis Park is not considered a racially-isolated school district. In order to be considered a racially-isolated school district, a school district, it would essentially mean that a district where the district-wide enrollment of protected students exceeded the enrollment of protected students of any adjoining district by more than 20 percentage points. So, here in St. Louis Park, we're not considered racially-isolated, but because, because we're receiving these achievement and integration dollars, and for us, here in St. Louis Park, it's about $800,000, because we're receiving these achievement and integration dollars, we must either partner with an adjoining district. So, for us, that would be Hopkins or Minneapolis, or participate in this type of consortium. You know, the, the direction that WMEP has gone, you know, they've really, they've been moving away from some of their cultural collaborative work. I think two years ago, Rob really talked about the fact that at that time, and I even recognized it as a employee of the ICAO Area School District, that WMEP was a leader as it related to racial equity professional development in the Twin Cities and region, for that matter. And over the, over the last couple of years, while they still offer cultural collaborative programming, it is not as robust as, as it has been in the past, and during that time, we've also, here in St. Louis Park Public Schools, have increased our capacity to do some of the work internally, and I'm not suggesting that all of the things that WMEP offers currently that we can do, but we've increased our capacity where we're able to do more of this programming. The, the reason that this update is timely is because at the last Joint Powers Board meeting, there were two additional school districts that at that meeting indicated that they would be submitting their notice of withdrawal this, before the December 30th deadline. So, I, I bring this information to, to the board right now, just as we're still in the process of exploring the impact that WMEP is, you know, providing us, understanding that if two more school districts, that would mean that St. Louis Park would be one of four remaining school districts that were a part of this, this consortium. Karen has gratefully, I mean, has generously served as our, our WMEP Joint Powers Board rep and has just updated, has updated me over the last few months of, around some of the, the things that have transpired there. So, at this point, I don't have a recommendation for the board. At this point, I wanted to provide this as information only, knowing that over the next several, next couple of weeks, that I'll be exploring more the services that we're getting from WMEP and what would be required of us as a school district in order to make sure that our staff and our students had access to the programming that we, we looked to WMEP for in the past. Any questions, comments?
So, I had a chance to talk to Karen and to the superintendent, just about what this might mean for us, and one thing that I would point out is I've just had a chance to, to look at the, and here's where I'd like board input, as the things that I kind of noted were, that I think we'd want to know as we go forward, is assuming that these districts do end up pulling out, and what, what's going to become a WMEP is a question mark then. What would the financial impact be? And so, I know, Sandy, you're already maybe working on that, but I just note- And so I know, Sandy, you're already maybe working on that, but I just note, that financial piece that I read here, that, you know, upon dissolution of the board, all the property, there was somewhat remaining after payment, or reservation of debts and liabilities shall be divided among all school districts, which have been members of the WMEP board, or among the members of the WMEP board at the time of such dissolution. So it seems to be saying two different things. I mean, there, because there are districts that have already left WMEP, and what does that mean for them, and then us, and is there a timing issue? I think we need to understand that as we go forward. And then the second thing, as you've already referred to, then, where are we going to get our professional development from? And, and we talked, maybe there's some things we can do in-house and deliver ourselves. And then the other thing that I raised, and this is, and then I'd like the board to kind of weigh in on other things that staff ought to consider. And you'll remember, Rob's repastor about wanting to stick with WMEP, he really believed in it, and particularly the professional development. And so it seems that we may be going in a different direction, and then I'll, I'll let, let Karen chime in with what her experiences are. But then the third thing is, kind of what, in my mind, sort of symbolic, being part of a metro-wide, you know, integration or desegregation process, you know, what is our involvement concern, and what should we be aware or thinking of as being one of the last remaining members? I mean, if we just end up in another collaborative, I mean, what does that mean for WMEP and potential future lawsuits? I mean, what symbolic moral obligation might we have as a district? Those are things that I'd want to have some consideration of. So this is a, a chance to kind of discuss what else we like, you know, if, as, as we're seeing a, a future without WMEP, that's now been around for, Karen, help me out, how many years? At least 18, or 16, or something? Feel like it's been here the whole time I was on the board, but...
If I, my other consideration, if I understood what Superintendent was saying, is that in order to get our $800,000 in integration funds, we need to be partnered with some, something beyond ourselves. So that's another factor in terms of what we do, is the impact it might have on that, on that funding. My memory of Rob's position on this was, he, I, I think he wanted to give WMEP a chance to reorganize itself and reformulate itself, and see if it could come up with ways of meeting the needs of more districts, so people would stay. Now, whether it's been able to do that or not, you know, I think, you know, we're finding out that two more districts think they're leaving. And so then, you know, I, I think your other concerns, I, I share them. And I just think we need, I'm glad you're raising this, and we can state our areas of concern, and then we can come back to it as we need to later.
And I, I appreciate that perspective. There have, you know, as I mentioned before, there, there have been districts, you know, in the last couple of years that have left WMEP and have formed their own partnerships, so that they could meet the, the expectations of the state, as it relates to the use of those achievement and integration dollars. And what I, what I want you to hear me say is that, I'm, I'm not suggesting that the programming and the direction that WMEP has decided to go is, is not valid or, or good work. The question that I believe we need to wrestle with is, is the direction of WMEP the direction of the St. Louis Park Public Schools, and does it help us accelerate the work of our strategic plan? And if, you know, if after, you know, some discussion and reflection that we believe it does, then we can make an informed decision. And if we, if we don't, then I think we, we need to start to think about what could the future look like then.
Joe?
Yeah, I really like the way you frame that. And, and just kind of speaking more broadly, I think whenever we look at WMEP, or 287, or TIES, or any of these consortiums, we need to look at it that same way. That we're not just going to stick around to stick around. We're going to need to get from it what, what can be beneficial to our students. And if we need to partner with somebody else, another district, we should look into that. But I'll be looking forward to the next update, where we get some more of that information about what does WMEP look like as a four-district consortium? Is that going to meet our needs, or are we going to have to start looking for other things?
And without getting into too much speculation, I'm sure you all are familiar with EMT, right? The East Metro, kind of the integration district that's kind of in the, in the St. Paul east side of town. And I would say several years ago, I believe they went through something very similar. And now, what they, what their programming looks like is essentially, they, they develop all sorts of professional development, and districts all across the, the region kind of, you know, pay for that on an individual-type basis, as opposed to having memberships like they currently exist in, in WMEP.
Karen?
The other thing that is also part of this conversation, and Bruce, you might speak a little bit to it with AMSD, is Reimagine Minnesota, because that's definitely a metro-focused. It, it impacts the metro in a, in a much greater capacity. And there's many more players at the Reimagine Minnesota table at this point. And Bruce and I were at the gathering last spring at the middle school, and was there any other people there? Yeah, there were about 80 people.
That rolls out of the, isn't there the current pending lawsuit?
Yeah, the threat of the DSEG lawsuit again, which right now is tabled for the moment.
When, when is the next, your next board meeting?
The Monday after the election, the 13th.
Is that the WMEP?
They added some work sessions, so on Thursday, the 9th of November, from 6:00 to 8:00, we'll be having a work session.
You know, I guess the one other thing we need to understand, I mean, probably sooner than later, is what kind of legal obligations to, for withdrawal that we need. So if I'm understanding, Karen, you know, we're having some issues, maybe obtaining the necessary documents, so that, I, I guess we need to talk to, to the WMEP leadership and current, I mean, you know, it does concern me that the districts that left, I mean, I think there's going to be, I mean, there are some expenses, and, and want to understand where they're hooked for. But if it turns out that we want to withdraw, or whatever, we need to know what we need to do, and what the timing is. And so, and you had expressed that as well, so...
And I think it's important that we consult with Michelle Kenny to read, as you've mentioned before, the legal language. And there's, not only the ambiguity you pointed out, but there's an ambiguity between the agreement and the bylaws with different deadlines. And is it December 20th, is it December 30th? But I think we need to be prepared before the deadlines with what our decision is going to be.
Right. So, so there is some timeliness on this, and we should have to probably bring this back. But what, but these are some things we could explore in the interim, as to what our, what the rights and obligations are, and, and what are our plans, and who would we work with, and to make sure we took advantage of all the dollars available, and provide the best development possible. And pleased to hear that, I mean, it's my understanding that some of our staff was actually doing some of the things for WMEP. So, I mean, we're in a, in a good spot, but...
Yeah. No, and I appreciate you mentioning that. I should have referenced that, as I was talking about the professional development. Our staff has, in the past, offered Beyond Diversity. For example, they facilitated for WMEP as a member district, a recent hire, the Silver Rights Research Experience that our students participated in last year. A newly, a new hire here in St. Louis Park actually developed the curriculum for WMEP for that experience. So we've made some, some really good hires recently that have allowed us to create more capacity to do some of these things internally. Now, I say that, understanding that there are financial implications as well. So whatever happens moving forward, we're just going to have to be mindful of really trying to foster partnerships with other school districts in our region that are doing similar type of work.
Bruce?
We mentioned the $800,000. And I want to be, Sandy, I, I just want to look to you to correct me if I'm wrong, but as long as we partner with districts that are connected to us, we wouldn't necessarily, I mean, being not part of WMEP, would, wouldn't mean we'd lose that $800,000. We simply need to continue our partnerships with those districts.
Right. But, but these are things that we may have to figure out sooner than later, as to who that would be, who's available, who's willing to join, you know, who fits the criteria, what, how much it's going to cost, so yeah. Anything else that we should have staff look at before it comes back, you know?
I think you hinted at it, Jim, but, but one of the concerns at 287, when people, a couple of districts withdrew, was, was what does that mean for the last district standing? Are they going to get hit with everything that's left, or is that shared with the former districts? That's a huge question that I have, with going into a cost-benefit. This is what we're talking about, the cost-benefit analysis. And, and I think it needs to be carefully thought out and looked at, and our legal counsel, Michelle Kenny, involved, and, as you say, sooner rather than later.
All right. So stay tuned, and we'll look for this to come back, and we'll have some decisions to make on that. But the point was just to kind of get this out, so we're all thinking about it and see it on the horizon, so... All right. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the referendum update. Sarah? I think you were actually at the last meeting on the referendum update, as I recall. Is that possible, or no?
I don't know. Anything's possible these days. Anything's possible. Chair Yarosh, members of the board, happy to inform you that tonight, we are a mere 15 days away from Election Day. Yes, I am counting. I have a fantastic team with me here tonight, Superintendent Osai, Lisa Green, Sandy Celine, Tom Bravo. We wanted to give the school board, as well as the community, one more soup to nuts, everything you need to know about the referendum package. So we're going to walk you through how we got to this point, and give you a little sneak peek of what the future could hold tonight. So, like I said, we're 15 minutes, or 15 minutes, 15 days, Hank, I need more than 15 minutes. 15 days to Election Day. And so we've, we've got a lot to do. So we're going to start with the superintendent tonight. He's going to give us some background from the strategic plan, and talk about how we got to this point.
Good evening again. And first, I would like to thank each of you for your leadership, because we wouldn't be standing here today if it wasn't for your leadership and just vision as to where we need to go as a school district and a community. And I'm intentional by saying "school district and community" because, as part of the work that you all have, the vision that you've led, the facilities that will be developed out of the referendum will, will definitely serve as community spaces, you know, for, for our public. But, you know, with our, we, we start any conversation about the referendum with our, our mission statement and strategic plan. You know, while a lot of the work around the referendum comes out of strategy for, all of these, and I, as I see Ann Casey sitting in the audience, I'm taking, I continually have used this line, because it's so true. All of our strategies work together. And, you know, we can't have a strong teaching and learning strategy without the facilities that are consistent with the needs of our learners and communities. So I just wanted to start off by thanking you, as this is truly the foundation of, of the work that we've done over the last several months, and moving forward to 15 days?
15.
15 days away around the referendum.
And we convened a, what we called a learning design team, that met for a number of times over a period of seven months. It was 38 people that represented district staff, the community, parents. We had a high school student. And came together for many long meetings, lasting four hours or so. I think every single one of them lasted four hours. And we reviewed our existing facilities, and best practices on learning design and planning, and, and we toured our buildings, and then we, a number of us actually went up to Alexandria and toured the high school there. And we got to play with manipulatives, and make little, move things around. We got to move buildings around, we got to move classrooms around. We looked at cost analysis, and then we took all of that information, and we presented it to the board. What we did was we, we were tasked by you, the school board, to create three proposals. One, a $40 million proposal, one, a $75 million, and one, $125 million. And they were based on common ground that all the people on the learning design team could agree to. And that was that we have learning for all ages, and that would be from preschool through senior citizens, that PSI moves to Cedar Manor, that we need additional classroom space at the middle school and at the high school, an auditorium at the middle school, we needed a new weight room at the high school, and, very important, a central kitchen, so we could have fresh, from-scratch cooking at our schools. An exit date for Central, we knew the district office has to move out of the high school. We wanted a committed space, and a right-sized space for early childhood, looking at our owned properties. And then, at every school, we're, we know we had to bring up our security, our technology, our HVAC, and our accessibility. So there's something for everybody. And then, as you know, we had many meetings with the school board, and, and you. So we had a three-month process, oh, as part of the whole learning design team, and as part of, we went out to the community, had many community input meetings, and met with you a number of times, and you decided to, you selected $100.9 billion bond referendum. And the projects will impact all of our learners in St. Louis Park. I'll turn it over to Sandy.
And going through the background of our finances and tax impact, before we go to the background, I'm just going to explain briefly the tax impact, which I think everybody's seen. On a $250,000 home, which is considered our, our median price of home in St. Louis Park, you'd be paying $12 a month. And, and we're looking at St. Louis Park's finances as being very sound. The history has brought it to a place where it's a very strong community support, which has supported our sound financial practices. With our budgeting process, we do use a strategy to align to the strategic plan to support all learners and programs. And by doing this, we have developed a fund balance in our Unreserved General Fund that is sufficient to sustain any unforeseen events in the future. And how we do this is, we use community involvement in this process, which not only uses the Financial Advisory Committee, but the board as well, in developing the budgets to, to go, work towards this financial strength. And the Finance Advisory Committee is one of the committees that we have formed, that's been in existence for a few years now, that consists of administration, board members, teachers, and parents, and in the community, to look through our annual auditing process, as well as helping us develop those budget parameters that the board will then eventually We have been recognized by various agencies, investment agencies, such as Moody's, as a district with financial strength. And having a AA2 rating from Moody's certainly has provided that information to us, that we are a district of financial strength. So with that, I think it's back to Sarah.
And we should say, there's, and there's a benefit with that, too. We get better interest rates on our bonds because of that.
Absolutely.
And I think that, and also hopefully, with a little continued luck here with low interest rates, we're hoping to really maximize the dollars here.
Absolutely.
And what it's going to cost to borrow this money, so...
Thank you.
The timing could be good. Bruce?
I just want to support Sandy in that, that, that rating, because we are financially strong, that rating is one of the highest in the state of any school district.
Thank you, everyone. So we wanted to talk a little more tonight about the need, and how did we get here? And how does, how do you make up the, the projects that go into $100.9 million? And so, what came out of the learning design team, and all of our study over months of time, we boiled our needs down to these five things. So we have increasing, increasing enrollment, we have aging facilities, we need flexible learning spaces to accommodate next-century learning, technology infrastructure to support that learning, and our schools really need to serve as community centers. So not only are they functional during the school day for our students and teachers and staff, but how can they be used as community centers? In the mornings, after school, nights and weekends, so that they really do serve the taxpayers, the residents... taxpayers, the residents, and all community members in St. Louis Park. So, we focused on our needs. Wanted to share with you tonight, another video piece that we've developed that highlights all of the different needs. St. Louis Park is a community that really emphasizes putting children first.
We have amazing educators and amazing students.
The really great thing about St. Louis Park is it looks a lot like the world.
The district really values elevating all of our students.
I'm a big believer in public school education.
That's one of the reasons St. Louis Park has such great value and people wanna live here and why our home values are, are high, because we have great schools.
I am extremely excited to be the superintendent of St. Louis Park Public Schools. This community has a long tradition of putting its students first and supporting its schools.
And based on that, what were your findings?
This referendum is not about once. The school board designed a package to meet the needs of all of its learners and also to be mindful of the tax impact on its citizens. The passing of this referendum will help us support our increasing enrollment, aging facilities in need for more flexible classroom space.
We've been growing, which is a great thing. People wanna come to St. Louis Park and we don't have enough room.
There are more kids in our classroom today than what I've experienced in the past. You have to be a little more creative and, you know, suggestions are made that are Band-Aids. Well, you could have half the class do a lab and half the class work independently on something. Today's students require more of us.
We have lunch out in the hallway for some of our students. Multiple teachers are using many of our classrooms because we don't have enough classroom space.
With the weight room program, it's a lack of space. It's always super packed. We end up having to use the gym to warm up, but then that kinda interferes with practice.
Except for some infrastructure support, our facilities haven't changed a whole lot. But we have a lot of needs today, a lot of things have changed.
Our early childhood education center, it's a building that was built in the thirties, and that's created a lot of maintenance issues. Making that building more efficient is gonna save the district money.
Right now, not all of our elementaries have a safe entrance, and at Peter Hobart, we do not have a safe and secure entrance.
We wanna add more cameras and more other security measures in which to keep our, our student and community safe when they come here.
The heating and the cooling, the kids can't focus. When they're so, so hot, they're not thinking about what it is that they're being taught.
I think one of the big things that we're lacking in St. Louis Park is facilities that help to feed our kids really well. The food we eat has such an impact on our health, not only the health of our body physically and how we feel on a day-to-day basis, but absolutely the health of our brain.
Right now, we have one auditorium that everybody uses, and when you can't use it, then your kids are performing in a gym.
Who else has some different thinking?
Our students in St. Louis Park are ready for next century learning. It no longer is rows of desks, it is an environment where these desks can be pushed together, where students can work in groups, whether it be with devices, whether it be collaboration. We know that we're ready to move and shift to next century learning.
The kids need to have critical thinking when they leave, they need to know how to be collaborative, and we need to create an environment in which they're engaging with the teacher rather than just us sit and get.
We, St. Louis Park residents, know that strong schools equal strong communities. We need to stay current, we need to provide facilities that will match the great education we're getting here right now.
I'm excited about the future. We have a tremendous community, students and staff that embody the core values of St. Louis Park Public Schools.
Muy bien, Samaya!
This referendum is an investment in St. Louis Park and our collective future. If both questions are approved, a homeowner of a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar home would see a tax impact of twelve dollars a month. Please vote on November seventh.
So, that outlines some of the need that we're looking at with our referendum, and as soon as we can safely switch our technology over without hurting anybody's ears, I think we're there. Superintendent Osai is going to walk you through the projects that are included in the referendum.
So, the video highlighted many of the, the needs here in St. Louis Park. So, as, as a part of the work that will occur, Park Spanish Immersion will be moving to Cedar Manor, and as a part of that, the early childhood programming will move over to assume the space that Park Spanish Immersion currently, is, is where it's currently located. And as part of the early childhood center, space being renovated, there will be a secured entryway and improved parking for families as they're dropping their, their students off in the morning. Ultimately, because of increasing enrollment, the district office will move out of the high school and eventually move over to Central and assume the space where the early childhood programming currently is located. We would relocate Transitions Plus from leased space to Central, remodel space for adult options, will maintain the central clinic, maintain the gymnastics space there and swimming pool, and update the kitchen. Elementary projects, you know, I mentioned that Cedar Manor will be the new home of Park Spanish Immersion. You heard Carrie on the video talk about a secured entryway at Peter Hobart. All of our buildings would be air-conditioned, that don't currently have air conditioning. Elementary schools will receive updated furniture and all of the kitchens at, in our elementary schools, and all of our schools for that matter, would receive updated kitchens. The projects at the middle school, we would add additional classroom space, including science classroom spaces, and surely here you'll be able to see some images of what these spaces will, will look like once the referendum passes. We would expand the lunchroom space. You, on the video, saw the principal of the middle school, Les Bork, talk about students eating in the, in the, in the hallway and just not having enough space in the cafeteria to accommodate all of the students that are at the middle school. We would expand the office space to create a secured entryway, as Peter Hobart and the middle school are two of our last schools that do not have a secured entryway. There would be a new performing arts space at the middle school and orchestra room, renovated media center and ten next century classrooms, and the kitchen will be updated at the middle school as well. At the high school, I referenced that the district office would be moving out because of increasing enrollment. Ultimately, the high school offices would be relocated down to where the district offices currently reside, and we would renovate the former high school offices to become classrooms. There would be a new commons area, new Lincoln Learning Commons area, media center renovation, renovated weight room and fitness area, renovated locker rooms, ten, ten next century classrooms, and the, the new centralized kitchen where all of the healthy, made-from-scratch meals will be prepared and then shipped off to each school that will have the kitchen and supplies necessary to accommodate those healthy made-from-scratch meals. District-wide, as part of that, we talked about healthy made-from-scratch meals, but there will be five million dollars in deferred maintenance, improved backbone technology, and I believe it was Lisa that talked about really right sizing facilities to meet the needs of some of our earliest learners, but also here at the Lenox Community Center, we would be right sizing that space to meet the needs of some of our eldest learners here in the St. Louis Park community. And that, that there are a number of different things listed here that would really help to improve that space to make it more inviting to the learners that are currently using it. So, I'm gonna allow you, Sarah, to get me set up with the...
I believe Tom Bravo, our facilities manager, is gonna walk you through, I guess I'll navigate the computer.
Okay.
Walk you through some of the, the potential designs of what could be. It's an important statement to say, this is what could be. After the referendum, if we are successful at the polls, large teams will come together, district, internal and external stakeholders, to determine what these spaces will be. But we thought it was important with the wide range of projects included in this referendum to put together some pictures, some images, some artist concepts, if you will, of what could be. So, I'll ask Tom to walk us through.
Okay, so the, the school board, I'd like to walk you through the first one, and the first slide is our kitchen cafeteria area, and this is really the cafeteria portion of it. As you can see, there's gonna be additional seating, about two-hundred more seats. Right now, we're about four-hundred and we're really packed and kids are finding, trying to find spots to eat. With that, we're also gonna have a two-story type glass environment where we're gonna bring in that natural light.
Tell me, is this the high school you're talking about?
This is the high school, I'm sorry. This is the high school. And so, with that, it, it creates several things. Number one, brings in that natural light, that's what the educators would like to see, and, and also energy efficiencies. So, we don't need to have the lights on constantly and so forth with all that natural light. Plus, it's, it just feels warming and welcoming, and that's what we want. We have seating that's gonna be from bench seating to high tabletop to round table seating, so our students can enjoy the environment that they want to and feel comfortable eating. This is still the high school, this is will be the, the link between, right now, the space is a grassy area that it's hard to maintain, hard to, we can't even get a lawnmower in there. But now you're gonna be able to see the enclosure of it, again, two-story high, natural light, glass. We're gonna have an area where not only the day program of the students could be using it for learning, but it's also gonna be used for nighttime, for programs, for community. So, it's inviting. As you can see from the way at the far end, there's stairs, bench seating, so that we can have, you know, someone can have conferences back there that, that they could, you know, do a lecture, things of that nature. So, it's gonna be opening and welcoming, we're gonna maintain the brick, we maintain the integrity of the building itself, but we're gonna show that this is a St. Louis Park building moving forward. Now, we're moving to the middle school. This will be the, the entryway of the, of the new middle school. As you can see, this is where the, the addition, but a performing arts building, we're, we're looking at all different types of materials when we, when we do all this because of the fact that we need to always be sustainable. That's one of the agreements that we made to this district, is that we wanna be green, sustainable, and be able to make sure that we use the right products. As you can see here, there's gonna be another, again, two-story as they enter, natural lighting coming in, it's gonna be secured, people cannot go any further than the offices after the school starts, and we'll be able to seal off certain areas when we have programs at night so that people can still enjoy the building, but they don't have to run through the whole area where there's classrooms and so forth, they'll be going straight to the performing arts auditorium or cafeteria. This will be the inside of what, what the performing arts could look like. We're looking at seating, about four-hundred to four-hundred-and-fifty seats with tiered seating, and this, with all sound attenuation, natural, or lighting again, and we will have a stage out in the back area for plays, performances, and we, we feel that when people saw this, when we presented to the community, they were just enjoyed to, can't wait till they can use this facility because there's just so much need. They had Lion King over at Aquila last year where people couldn't really see the performance because we had it in a, in a gym. Here, you're gonna be able to see the performance, the kids are gonna be able to, to just sing their hearts out.
Tom, before you leave that, my understanding is the reason for the size of that is, and I think this is a learning piece that I want the community to understand. Les Bork asked for the size of that auditorium to match and be a little larger than the size of a class, so he could have all sixth graders come in there if he needed, wanted, or all seventh graders, or all eighth graders, and make presentations that were age-appropriate to various classes. I think that's a great.
Yeah, correct.
Face of this that I wanna make sure we talk about.
Yeah, I'm sorry I missed that, but yes, you're correct. It was, it was size per grade. Now, we're moving over to Cedar Manor, where Park Spanish Immersion will be going to. Again, you can see that we, we have a building, a security entrance, two-story again, different types of materials, trying to preserve the brick that's there now, and looking at how we can make it so that's welcoming and warming with, we're gonna have a lot of wayfinding, a lot of signage throughout this whole construction. And again, what, the, the goal is to meet the needs of the mission that we put together, but also when people come to St. Louis Park and they come to our schools, they know it's St. Louis Park schools. Now, I think we're gonna do the flybys, right?
Yeah.
So, this one is the middle school, as you can see, the, where the addition of the cafeteria, then the addition of media center, the linking to link the both sides, and then of course the performing arts and a new entryway. So, a lot of construction, a lot of additions, more and more space for our students. As you can see from there, you can see the, again, the glass, the windows, the natural lighting, the different types of materials. We're just excited to be able to bring this to, to this district, and we, it's, it's well needed and it's something that we're gonna be very proud of with the, with the addition that you see there, the cafeteria, more, more glass, and then the link and more classrooms and the media center. So, as you can see from there, it's all gonna be glass up on top. Now, this is the high school, as you can see where the weight room addition and an enclosure between the two buildings, the addition of the cafeteria and kitchen with a linking both the entryways, so when the bus gets, the bus drops off, students will be able to enter one, one spot and they'll link up with the drop-off up on top. So, there'll be a, a one entrance, people will know that this is the entrance. We will have, again, good signage, good wayfinding, so that people are, and students feel welcome when they come in the space. As you, we go around the building itself, you can see we, this one will also have many additions to this building, plus what's gonna be done internally with the classrooms and the ten additional classroom additions. So, along with this, I get to talk about also a thing that most of our facilities people enjoy talking about, and that's deferred maintenance. I was at a Masmus conference two weeks ago and it was kinda fun to talk to colleagues like mine, and we all talked about the same thing, you know, how can we maintain our buildings and how can we keep them going? And it was exciting and, and I know it bore you, but I was all excited about it, I didn't wanna leave there when we, when we had to come back. So, with this, we, I, we all had to submit a ten-year plan, ours was approved by the state. We were, are gonna be fortunate, we're hoping to get another additional five million on the bond referendum. And I, I know that the superintendent, Sandy, get tired of me every day when I come in and say, geez, it can't come fast enough, it can't come fast enough. There are things that we really wanna move forward, and we understand that we do have buildings that are aged and we need to work on our heating, venting, air conditioning. We have many, many exhaust areas that, that are not working properly, and we just know that we're doing the best we can, and you know that, and with this additional five million and the five million that we've asked for in deferred maintenance, we're gonna go real far in making this environment a lot more pleasing for our students and our staff. So, with that, we're gonna be doing energy management upgrades, classrooms, again, electrical, and additional improvements without, throughout the whole district. So, I like to kinda go over the schedule of, you know, once the, you know, the referendum passes, that we are gonna be very aggressive. We have talked to the, the state, we've talked to the city, we've talked to other regulatory agencies, and we, they're excited for us to start to submit plans once we start getting things rolling. We're looking at schematic design beginning sometime in, in, in November, December, that's gonna go all the way until about, you know, May, June, and then with that, if this doesn't stop there, then we, we will pass that, the plans on to our regulatory agencies. on to our regulatory agencies to have them review it. And hopefully, by a year from May of 2018, 2019, we'll be starting the big projects. But in 2018, doesn't mean that we won't be doing anything. In 2018, we're going to be looking at the air conditioning of all the elementary schools. So that's going to be a big task. And I've been kind of planting the seed of, you know, once those get started sometime when school's out in 2018, which is not that far away, we're going to have to kind of really look at how we're going to displace those services that are at elementary schools that are being used right now because we are going to be doing a lot of work. And then in 2019, again, we'll be starting the major work in the middle school, the high school, Cedar Manor, and all the other 42 projects that are listed in the referendum. And that will go for about another two more years or so before we're 100% done.
So Tom, you actually mean there, the schematic design is November 2018, although we're going out to the election in 2017?
Yeah, I think that's a mistake right there. You're right. That was 2017. So my mistake.
Okay, just wanted to double check.
You're right.
I could have rationalized it for you, but I didn't know if I had to.
Nope, nope. You know, sometimes I do make a mistake once in a while, I guess. And then, of course, we do have Cunningham Group that's on board, and they're excited to start to work with us and all our teams, starting right after the referendum. And with that, I think Sarah.
So I think that gives you just a really good overview, nuts and bolts, of what we're looking forward to on Election Day. Election Day is November 7th, a mere 15 days away. There's a lot of information available to voters. You've hopefully received a lot of it at home. There's much to be had on our website. You can email us with questions. We have a Facebook countdown that's doing a different fact, different piece of the project every day. And there is one more public meeting, so Wednesday, the 25th, at 7:00 PM in the high school cafeteria, if you can attend in person. Otherwise, we will also be hosting that meeting as a Facebook Live event. So you can certainly log in and participate that way. And if you need information about voting, the city of St. Louis Park is your best resource for that. There is early voting, absentee voting, available for this election. So those are the particulars of the referendum upcoming in just 15 days. All of us are available if there's any questions that the board would have.
Excuse me, I'm a little under the weather. I don't really have questions. One quick question and then some comments. The website does have a lot of information, and if you put any of the slideshow up there, can you correct that one slide?
Yes.
But on the website, you can go in and figure out what the tax impact is for any individual home, right?
Correct. It's called Tax Impact Calculator.
I got a mailing at my house, I'm sure everybody else did. So if you've got that mailing recently, that also, you can look at that grid and you can figure out for yourself too what, you know, but I think you said the average for a $250,000 home is about, what was it?
$250,000 is the median home in St. Louis Park, and it's $12 a month, tax impact.
Don't want to misstate that. The other thing I wanted to just say for the record is, I'm so grateful to the learning and design team for giving us three great options that we could work with. We actually had meetings on Saturdays that went longer than four hours. So I just want, you know, we really fly-spect that work as grateful as we were to it, and we really talked amongst ourselves with our school educators in coming up with the ultimate plan that we're presenting here. And so it was a privilege to work collaboratively with the board and our educators to pick kind of a hybrid, not exactly what had been recommended to us, but what we all believed was the best thing to take out to our public. Sue Sanger, who was on our city council, had called me with a question she was getting. And so I just want to talk about that in case somebody else is watching this. There was some not understanding about the centralized kitchen and yet still doing work on the other school kitchens. So the centralized kitchen at the high school is designed to help make more and more scratch, from scratch food, not processed food, to get out to our kids so they're eating healthier. It will go out to each of the sites, and we've done the studies on the economics of this, so it works. Just trust that. And then it will go out to each of the sites so that it can be distributed at each of the sites to the students there. But those kitchens at the sites need to be up to code to handle food that comes so that it can be distributed. And so that's what's being done at all the individual schools that aren't the high schools, bringing, making sure those kitchens are up to code for the food that they will be distributing there. So it's exciting. It's November 7th. We hope people get informed and come out and vote. If you don't vote, I think it's a no. So if you, am I right about that?
If you leave the question blank, it's considered a no vote. So only the boxes that are filled in.
If you come out and vote, we want you to vote. And there are two questions on the ballot. We've only talked about the bond question. Jim, do you want to talk about the other question because that's really important to us?
The other is just the renewal of our levy, which the funds represent roughly 20% of our annual budget. And again, there will be no new tax impact from a passage of the renewal. It's simply a renewal to hold in place what we already have. And they're super important, a lot of jobs, teachers, people impacted by that. So super important that we renew that.
An easy way to remember the difference in the questions is levies are for learning. So levies are for learning in classrooms, so teachers, programs, supplies, things like that. Versus bonds, bonds are for building, so bricks and mortar, structure. Is a good way to remember the difference between the two questions.
Bruce?
One of the things I just wanted to mention, and I think it's really important. Tom Bravo has been a wonderful part of our staff here. And Tom, we really appreciate you, and has maintained these buildings beautifully. However, with that said, some of these buildings go back to FDR's time, some even before that. I think may go back to Teddy. But the fact is that they have been beautifully maintained, and that's great. But now it is the time to step into that next century learning. And that's the power of what this committee has done, what the board has done, and I'm extremely proud of that. But there is a personal note here. I want that construction completed by 2021 because my granddaughter starts kindergarten in 2022. So that's important.
All right. Well, we look forward to the daily updates.
Thank you.
On Facebook and all the likes, and appreciate the effort. And it's really, I think we have a really good, solid project here, so hopefully the voters will agree. Oh, Karen, one more.
I'm just really impressed with the different ways you've managed to help people engage with this process because we've had the listening sessions in various locations. The Twitter Town Hall was really dynamic. And now this Facebook Live, all of these are innovative things that we've never done before. And I really applaud the group for making an effort to find the exact way that our community wants to engage with us on this question. So thank you for all of that.
Thank you, Karen.
All right. Next item on the agenda is policy development. First reading of Policy 514, Bullying Prohibition. 515, Protection and Privacy of Pupil Records. And 521, Student Disability Nondiscrimination. Cindy, do you want to, yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Chair Yarosh. The three policies that are brought before you this evening for consideration and first reading. Bullying prohibition, there's very little change. It's just basically on the very last page. It's on 7G, striking out the reference, just very, very minor. This one was last brought before the board in 2014, based on legislative demand that year, that everyone was supposed to review their bullying in 2014. So this one's very minor. Appreciate your consideration of that. 515 is a biggie. It was last reviewed in 2011. 2013, there were some legislative changes, and MSBA usually follows five to six months after the legislature dismisses. And they get all the changes and recommendations, et cetera, run through Knutson &amp; Flynn. And these are what are recommended in red that we add to 515. It's pretty repetitive throughout the whole policy, if you've had a chance to read it. Also, what's called Public Notice, could also be called Procedures, but it's brought before you to see the consistency in the changes in that that go along with the policy. So it's a lot to read. I don't know if everyone's had a chance to read it, but it's coming to you for a first reading tonight also. And the third one, 521, Student Disability Nondiscrimination. Couple of minor changes recommended by MSBA in the general statement A and in the three coordinator. And the references, just a couple of additions of additional references. That's what we have before you this evening for a first reading.
Okay, thank you for that. Entertain any comments? And again, all the changes are in red, suggested by MSBA.
So I just have a question. Just to make sure for the superintendent that we're going to be able to follow the policy that's being changed and that people who need to do whatever they have to do are educated and informed. I don't know if we've been doing it all along and this is just formalizing it. But I just want to make sure everybody's on board. Okay?
All right. Any other comments? All right, they'll come back to us next week, which then brings us on to next item on the agenda, policy development, the second reading. No, 521, we still have it open there. You want to, you want to, yep, go ahead.
Sorry, I was looking at Policy 521, and I'm just looking, is this our first, this is our first read? Well, Section 3 talks about a coordinator. The School District's Americans with Disabilities Act/Section 504 Coordinator. Do we have somebody with that job title? And if we do, who is it? Because who would know who to call?
I'm listed in our publications as a district student 504 coordinator.
And so if somebody wanted to, I mean, I just want to make sure that if somebody wants to find out who to contact, is that listed on our website? How would they know it's, I would know it was Tammy. I would be clueless. So I just, you know, I just want to make sure there's a way to let people find who they need if they're looking at this policy and going, I don't know who to call.
We can get back to you on where it is. I know that I get random calls from people in the community that have questions, but I don't ask them where they found that. So we can follow up on that for you.
Board members, superintendent, that is listed in every school office, including the district's human rights officer, which is myself. So there's a listing of all those officers who are named in each of the school offices.
Is it a public list for the public to see, or is that just for the internal school and staff to know?
Right now, I don't know if it's also listed on the school's website, but it is in each of the schools.
That's all I care about. I just want, if we're going to have a policy and it's an important one, I just want to make sure people know who to contact because that's not a title that we're that familiar with.
Okay. Next item then is the second reading of Policy 102, Equal Educational Opportunity. We did have a comment last time, and I think Cindy has researched and has information for us.
Thank you. Yes.
I think it was, was it Bruce or Karen's question on the gender issue?
It came from the end of the table. It might have been Bruce, I believe. General Statement A, the first reading was asking you to consider the word gender. That was bringing forward from the last time the board looked at this in 2011. I believe the question from Director Richardson was, adding the word gender to this policy conflicts with bullying policy 514, I believe it is, where we last made that change to say, including gender identity expression. And I was asked to find out the rationale of why. So I connected with MSBA, couldn't really get the answer I was looking for. So I went to legal counsel, Michelle Kenny, and her response was, there wasn't really clear definition for, from the legislature either. But because she helped design the language for us with the way that we were trying to move towards being compliant and in uniform, to go, excuse me, to add, to strike gender, which was brought to you as a first reading, and insert including gender identity expression to mirror the bullying policy. So that was the explanation that I got from legal counsel on your question.
All right, so is there any further comment on that? Because this will come up for a vote tonight. Is there any? It seems to me that they ought to be consistent.
And that was her recommendation to do that.
Just a couple of grammatical things. It looks like we may have held on to an extra comma in Section A. And then, section...
Two A, Cindy?
Do you say an extra comma?
Yeah, right before gender. Well, just to double check to see if that's still there. And then E should be D as in dog, if we've gotten rid of all the ones in between, I think.
Yeah, E should be D, got it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
All right. Next, English major engineer, we're skeptical now.
Double major.
All right. So that brings us to our consent agenda. I would entertain a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda. Moved by Nancy, is there a second? Seconded by Bruce. Before we vote, I will note there were two retirements. Someone comment?
I can speak to Jane Sellstedt. A wonderful para for us over at Transition Plus for a number of years, stuck with us a couple of moves, and was very dedicated to all the students we served there. So we're grateful for her service.
I'm so sorry. I was speaking out loud, but I didn't have the button pushed. So Claire Ann came unusually late. It was personal, you know, personal reasons, and she retired the week before school started. Thankfully, we had a long-term sub that we had, you know, there for a whole different purpose, and we snatched that person up and filled that, I believe it was a grade three spot before school started. So we're happy for Claire, happy for Aquila.
Well, that's great.
Excuse me, Rick, was that Aquila or Peter Holbert?
For Claire Ann.
I believe Claire Ann was, I thought Claire Ann was at Aquila.
Oh, it says Peter Holbert on the...
I'll make the correction on that as well, thank you.
All right, thank you. And, well, maybe we'll see what we can do about her getting a book dedicated in her honor in the library, so.
She will. We pick up everybody who retired after July 1, and we include them in next year.
Great, great. All right, yep. Deserved recognition after 26 years, so. Great. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda with the correction, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That passes 6-0. All right, onto the action agenda. The approval of second reading of Policy 102, Equal Educational Opportunity. It is recommended that the school board approve the second reading of Policy 102, Equal Educational Opportunity as presented. Is there a motion? Moved by Bruce.
Second.
Seconded by Jim. Any other further comment? All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. That carries 6-0. Communications and transmittals, start down here. Karen?
Thank you. I'd like to highlight Children First Asset Number 2. I'd like to highlight Children First Asset Number 24, Achievement Motivation, and this relates to our high school band program. They're hosting a mattress sale as a fundraiser on Saturday, October, boy, what's the date on that? 28. 28. From 10 to 6, it'll be mattresses to try out in the cafeteria, all sorts, sizes, types, models. And this is to help them offset the cost for their spring trip to Hawaii, which does include active learning. So I'm really excited about this.
I'm sorry, where was it?
It's going to be...
In the gym?
The cafeteria.
Oh, cafeteria.
Yep. And then the other thing to point out, in today's mail, people got this flyer, and lifelong learners in our schools, 96,907 contacts from preschool and beyond, just the adults, children ages birth to five, youth grades K through 12, and community groups. So think about the population of our town. It's around 45,000. So our facilities are serving 96,907 opportunities. So say your kid is in basketball on Saturday, they're going to the gym probably 10 weeks in a row, in addition to going to school every day. So that's really a lot of use, and thank you for whoever produces.
I just want to raise quickly, we had a listening session, Jim and I attended. We don't include a lot of board members, simply because we don't want a quorum there, but it was a really good session with a number of different parents, including a couple of school board candidates, and that was great to have them there, as well as parents, but specifically I want to point out that there were two students there, and one senior and one junior, as I recall. And both of them were just wonderful, and they were there pushing for environmental education. And that was a really neat experience for us. Part of what we enjoy is hearing back from the students, just as we heard here tonight. I mean, that's a powerful piece of what we do. But it was so good at that listening session to have both of them there, both of them pushing hard for environmental education, to make sure that it's included in our IB, and we pass that message along to the administration. And I just want our students to know that we hear their voices, and we love it when they come and talk to us, because listening to them is a big part of what we do, and it's greatly appreciated.
And is there a call, another question that came up, had to do with IB and Spanish Elementary that passed on to the administration as well, what was happening there with that program? And I'm trying to think if there was anything else in an hour and a half. It was good dialogue, though. Not surprisingly, and maybe a good thing, not a lot on the referendums, so hopefully we're getting that message out. It's something intentional about having it before the election, so, but, all right. Nancy?
Two things. One, I just want to circle back to the policy conversation here. I was a little uncomfortable that we'd had legislative changes in 2013, and we didn't get around to acting on them to 2017. And I understand we get eventually, within a few months, that we get some notice from the MSBA. So I just want to flag all of us to that, and I'm, you know, think about how we can decide whether to bring those policies to the board sooner rather than later. And I'm thinking maybe that information should go to the board chair as well as the administration, and then together, they can have a conversation about whether or not it needs to come on the agenda and when, because the board chair and the superintendent work together on our agendas. So I'll just throw that out there.
Yeah, as a response to that, too, I think we have a policy on our policies, as I recall, and that's supposed to give us a timely review that we, I'm afraid that if we looked at it, we maybe haven't quite kept up as we've had, and that's interrupted by major things such as referenda, superintendent searches, but that's a good point.
And the other thing, I just, because I learned this, listening to our superintendent, this Saturday at 1:00 PM, geez, our football team is hosting a semifinal in the sections.
Our five and three football team.
Our five and three football team. I just have to say that. We have to just enjoy this moment. And so that's this Saturday, the 28th, and it's at 1:00 PM, and we're hosting, so it's going to be here. So let's hope for good weather, good football weather, and good fan support.
All right. Any further communications and transmittals? All right, I would entertain a motion for adjournment. Moved by Karen. Seconded by Joe. All those in favor for adjournment, say aye. Aye, opposed. That passes 6-0. We're adjourned.